Transact business, we're not transacting business.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, let's move on. Darren. Thank you for coming. I'm glad you guys all came. Ruby is out today because her mother just passed away this morning. So that that one is not to be made light of. We've got Lori in on Zoom. And then it's just the two of us up here, so we will move on. Move on accordingly. First up, we're gonna have Darren Joffe talk to us a little bit about the Agricultural Commons. Project that he's working on. Farmer D.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to be here. I guess where are our zoomers? Am I looking at them somewhere?
They're well, no.
Oh, okay. So I guess there was an inquiry, kind of an interest to kind of get an update since we last talked about some of the. The goals around preserving our precious farmland in the Chat Hills. I know I don't, I don't think I need to spend too much time kind of reiterating the intent, but I think we all kind of know that. The rural keeping Chat Hill rural, a lot of that is about preserving our farms, right? And so. The effort that this agrarian commons effort, this effort that I've been. Involved in that has been twenty something years now in the making. And recently has kind of become more pressing as we know more development pressures coming and farms are becoming. More valuable and harder to preserve the longer that we kind of wait. So there's a sense of urgency. To figure out how we can, as a city, I think, and just, you know, protect some of the prime farmland and some of the. Important farms and and not just protect the farms, but think about how we can support the farmers. To make a viable living on their farms and actually have agriculture as a part of the Chat Hills for the long term. You know, we can look at a lot of examples around the country. Where this hasn't been done well, and you've got a lot of high end estates and very little agriculture, you can look at some areas where this has been done well.
Tom, I can't hear any audio, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Tom?
That one. This one.
Yeah, yeah, actually.
Okay, wait, okay, I got it.
Good radio voice of yours and just keep talking.
No, no, I can't hear it.
Can anyone on Zoom here? No. I can't hear any audio. I can hear now, okay, great, you can hear us?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. So. A little crackle, yes, crackle. So I've just kind of, I won't repeat my whole long lengthy intro other than just to say. The the goal of this work, this initiative is to help protect the farmland, preserve the rural character in the Chat Hills. Not just protecting farms, but helping to support. Farmers and farm viability in the Chattahoochee Hills. And I just think it's important to reiterate that there are models where this has been done well, and there's models where this has not been done well. And I think we're at kind of a important inflection point as a city. Having been involved here for over twenty years and. And seeing these trends around the country, this is a really important time for the city to decide how it's going to, the city and the broader. Kind of collective of of the Chat Hills to figure out how we can put. Resources to agriculture, to conserving farmland and promoting agriculture and supporting farmers. In the Chat Hill so that we have a vibrant agricultural, real rural area. And so that's not an easy thing to do. It takes some real effort, it takes some real. Funding and it takes hard work, farming is hard work, like viable farming is not, I have spent twenty five years. Trying to figure out how to make a living farming and it's hard, I think we all know that. It's easy to sell land, you know, to. And and get out and cash out, it's hard to figure out how to protect land, preserve land and continue that legacy of agriculture, so. What's exciting about the Chattahoochee Hills is and where we are, I think, right now is. This is in, there's a an ethos, there's a commitment, there's even a financial structure within the city through TDRs and DTCs and PDRs. As development grows, there's resources built into that development to prioritize protecting open space and farmland. But we're not quite there yet as far as having like a bank, a resource to work with to go protect the key farms. We've we've done some important mapping. And looking at where are the most valuable farms in the Chattahoochee Hills from the perspective of good soils, productive farming soils. View sheds and, you know, farm infrastructure, good farm, operating farms, buildings, ponds, or, you know, we've looked at this at a high level. And we know there's some, some farms are much more valuable from an agricultural perspective than others. So we've got kind of an idea of prioritization. The thing that I think we haven't had and that we that we need more of in the city. A mechanism to go purchase those farms to educate landowners on their options. Around land trusts and conservation and TDRs and programs and opportunities. For farmers and landowners in the Chat Hills. To preserve those important farms, at least the potential to protect those farms. And I'd say that we, what we're also fortunate in the city, in addition to having some of those tools and mechanisms. And having the seventy thirty kind of conservation development structure and zoning. We also have the Chattahoochee Hills Conservancy, which is our local land trust that has the. Kind of the charter and the mission and the ability to help facilitate. The purchase and protection of open space and farms and what we need is funding to support those efforts. Right, or or landowners willing to contribute and support those efforts. And so in lieu of having the development credits and the financial mechanism of TDRs kicking in at some point. You know, how can we, is there a way to accelerate that because now is kind of the ideal time? You know, it was like yesterday was the ideal time to start trying to protect these farms. Being proactive, and so the other option I think is is looking at philanthropy. There are land trusts, there are individuals in our community who want to see farms protected, who want to see farmers be able to have. Working farms and afford to live in the Chat Hills alongside. Their higher end neighbors who appreciate that good food than the work that those farmers are doing. So there's a few strategies, I mean, clearly we've got development that can incorporate agriculture as Serenby has done. And other projects that are coming along on the development side want to do and incorporate farms. And help subsidize and support those farms as part of their development business. And then there's also. The opportunity for us to, as a city and with the Conservancy, to go and be proactive and work with landowners and purchase or. Give them the opportunity to discount or donate land into a, into the Conservancy to protect it as farmland. We do have some national partners, so we have a really strong like local team, right? We have a Conservancy, we've got a willing and passionate committed city. We have a lot of individuals in our community and businesses in our community that want to participate and support this philanthropically. There are even people that are interested in doing more farm type developments, not just. Actually like developing for farmers and farmer housing, we have an active project in the Chat Hills with a national partner in the Conservation Fund. The American Farmland Trust, there are national organizations that see the importance and value of the Chattahoochee Hills. And protecting these farms to serve as kind of a a food shed for the greater Atlanta area. And to preserve the character of what's really a gem around Atlanta. And so, so I just say, I think we're in a really good place. We do need, I think we have an opportunity and there's a need to try to accelerate. The resources that could come in to support the Conservancy's work at protecting more farms sooner. Before it gets more fragmented and some of those farms are gone, right, they're purchased and they're not going to be farms anymore. So that's the, that's personally, I think my my goal is that we. Are able to get some resources and kind of realize the vision of. Using the toolkit of the TDRs and so forth and as as well as leveraging philanthropy and our local and national land trust partners. To bring more agriculture and preserve more farms in the Chat Hills. So I'm, I've been doing a lot of this just because I believe in it and want to see it happen. There are some some supporters in our community that are behind this that want to see this happen. There are these national partners that are saying, we see the the need and the value, we're here to help. They've got a lot of experience doing this in other places around the country, so we're not reinventing the wheel. And I think, you know, the, there are some priority areas that through the mapping. That we have an opportunity to maybe focus on and and be more proactive with some of the landowners that are transitioning. Their land and they care and they would love to see something positive happen. But they need, they need to sell and they need a pathway to sell and they need. So. You know, we're, we're. I'd say we're, we've got our eye on it, but we don't quite have the amount of resources that we need as a, as a, I'm on the board of the Conservancy. And, you know, I think if we could get some of the philanthropy behind, I think between the alignment and the commitment of the city, the Conservancy. The development community and the farmers and landowners in our community, we could as a group. Attract some interesting funding to support some of the conservation, purchase and conservation of some key farms. And help support through some of the partners in the community like the Rodale Institute. Myself and several others that are working together to try to bring farmers to this area, help provide them with land, training. Access to markets, shared equipment, there's a culture building here of a local food system, it's nascent, it's baby. And it it has the potential to become a huge asset to this community and ultimately serve to preserve the rural character. And not just look pretty, but actually be a, an abundant agricultural economy. That feeds this community and feeds Atlanta community. So that's, that's the opportunity. I don't have any major breakthrough updates that we have. Any major breakthroughs yet, we have some, I think, some potential big wins coming our way. And we're not giving up.
I think just a comment first, then a couple of quick questions. One of the things that you're underselling is how lucky we are to have you here. For people that don't know, Darren has done this work all around the world to set up farms in the context of development and and in. Near urban areas all around the world, all over the country and has chosen to move back to Chattahoochee Hills. To do that thing here. And and again, we're really lucky to have you here. Bringing the energy to that, this is a conversation we've been having here for twenty years. But it's like anything, everything takes a champion. And I'm just glad that you're here championing it.
Thank you.
One of the things that you mentioned was communication to landowners, and this is something I've been talking a lot about lately too, is. The idea that, you know, we've got all these programs, all these possibilities, but that most people out in the community don't really know how they work. And so I'm hoping you'll participate too, as we're trying to pull those things together. Into kind of like a deck, you know, where somebody says, okay, I've got this farm, it's been my family for eight generations. I don't want it to become a development, what can I do to get value for my kids or whatever? And and I mean, farming can be an aspect of that. The other thing is just a question, because I know we've talked about this before too, and and you didn't mention it that much in your conversation, but. This idea of the kind of path to ownership for young farmers coming in, you know, to this land potentially, if you talk about that just a sec.
Yeah, you know, I brought it up a little bit in a previous presentation, there's a couple of different models for how this can work, there's. And without going into all the details, but we have a a working model right now in the Chat Hills that's happening where the Conservation Fund. Is purchasing a farm from a landowner that cares about the farm staying in farming and with farmers. And has paired two farmers to that land with a path, potential pathway to ownership. And, you know, there's a, the Conservation Fund has a, they do this all over the country now. They've identified the Chat Hills as a, as a prime place to do this work. They've had some success in Georgia with several projects. And it does, it's it's very unique because it gives young farmers. An opportunity to actually have a pathway to ownership in their land. And so that you don't just have farmers farming on someone else's land, they actually. Are part of the community and they can build equity in their farms. That's one model. And it's a good model for those who, those farmers who are in a position to be able to take on a mortgage and and own a property. It's a mortgage at a reduced rate because the the development revites have been pulled off of it and there's been tax benefits for keeping prime farmland and agriculture, there's federal funds, there's state funds. There's ways that those resources can come and help bring the cost down, so it's more more affordable for the farmer, they're still buying it and paying it off and working it off. The other model is is agrarian commons kind of created this innovative model that in lieu of. Equity and land ownership. They they kind of remove the. The commodification of land altogether, meaning that land, once that land has been put into. A trust into a commons, which is locally governed and managed by farmers and stakeholders, that land is never sold. So the farmer that's on that farm can build equity in their business, they could build some equity in their infrastructure. But they never sell the land, they never buy the, they don't have to buy the land, they have a ninety nine year lease, they can renew the lease, so it's a slightly different model, so it. Has a longer term protection. You know, because the Conservation Fund model is wonderful for helping farmers get access and gain equity, but it doesn't necessarily guarantee, it guarantees that that land will not get developed. But doesn't necessarily guarantee that that land's not going to get sold, right, at a, at a market rate at some point. To someone else who would want it, knowing they're not going to be able to develop it anymore. So there are a couple of different models, I think all the tools in the toolkit are good, I mean, we're looking at farms and developments, we're looking at. Conservation Fund model farms, we're looking at the agrarian commons model and looking at some mixed income development where you've got some farm hamlets. You know, like creating some smaller, small farmer hamlets, not not the hamlet so much that the. Definition that we have in the Chat Hills, but more the traditional, you know, four to twenty homes, farmers, you know, a farm oriented hamlet, not a big retail kind of. Or mixed, mixed use or even large residential, but like. Where you can kind of aggregate farmers together on shared land and shared infrastructure and there's a sense of community. And, you know, that's, that's a model that's out there, we're working on several of those projects around the country. There is kind of a sweet spot of having the mixed income so that you have. Communities that are, you know, some of the higher end houses help subsidize some of the more affordable houses. And then the farmers and the, the people who want to live in a farming community and are in. In it together and they're kind of helping make it work by, you know, some are putting in a lot of work, some are putting in more money, but together they're creating a more of a mixed income community. And that's another, so there's. There's, this does not mean that development can't happen, it's just really trying to prioritize that the kind of development that happens. In the rural roads, the small, the areas of the Chat Hills that really don't, aren't conducive to larger development, stay small agricultural rural. Could still have farmers living on that land and farming that land and small, smaller rural community. And where there makes sense to have larger development on main infrastructure and that the villages, the original vision of like these villages. Get built up and then these farms support. And the one other point I I think is is worth making is that. So one of the things that makes the village hamlet concept really, really vibrant. Is when the land around these kind of hard edged villages and hamlets is actually farming and farms and nature and open space and trails and that. That gives the like connectivity that you're, you have a relationship to the land and farming around you. Like the old villages in Europe, you know, I mean, this is like the makers and the butchers and the dairies and the farmers would. Be on the edge of town and they come into town and that's where they do their, 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 their. Their sales and their markets, that's the kind of thing that should and could happen here very easily. And so in places like Rico here, where you've got this kind of like crossroads community. The areas immediately around it, rather than just spilling out into kind of suburban type or or development for, you know, for for miles. You kind of have these hard edges and these conserve lands and you can start to prioritize almost these. These little districts, local conservation farm districts, where you've got a development and you've got agriculture immediately walkable and related to that community. And the way the Chat Hills is laid out, there's several of these kinds of, kind of pockets. Where the hamlets and the villages make sense and then the land around it is has a a strong relationship and adds adds a lot of value. To those, to those, where those developments are. So there's, there's a lot of kind of thinking holistically at the, at looking at the Chat Hills as a whole. And really being strategic about where, and this is how this city started, was like thinking about it at that scale. Like where does development really make sense and then how do we preserve all the farms so it stays rural? We need to stay on it and kind of, you know, continually prioritize projects and land as they come up to maintain that character. As it, as the character evolves and grows, inevitably it's going to change, but how do we do it so that it changes? But. Not just kind of. Scattered, that it's thoughtful and that, you know, and that it's vibrant and there's, that there are farmers and food. Businesses as a big part of the growth of this community as well as there's houses, I want to grow farms alongside our houses.
Thanks, Darren. Any questions for Darren, Lori, do you have any questions, can you hear?
Uh, yeah, I have questions, can you hear me, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Hey Darren, so for. Trying to explain this to residents who haven't heard about it before, I I think I probably missed the first minute or two of your presentation just now because of the audio problem, but. Could you say, is this a personal initiative of yours, is it part of the Conservancy? Is it a partnership with the city, can you explain which group is is driving this initiative?
Yeah, I I think it's the, the city is is driving, I would say, my, oh, the audio went off. Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'll talk a little louder, I think the mic went out. I mean, from my perspective, this has been a part of the original vision of the city since I was here twenty something years ago. This is real, helping to try to realize. How the Chat Hills can can develop and grow and maintain its agricultural rural identity in a way that's not just like. Not just a aesthetic, but a real working landscape, a real agricultural community. And so that's, that to me is a, is it's primarily, I think, part of the goal of the city. I'd say second, second, it's the Conservancy is the mechanism that was created by the city to help make that happen. You need a land trust that is managing and stewarding all these, these lands and opportunities and prioritizing and fundraising and. And educating and and managing all the administrative side of how, how you actually. Can preserve and protect these farms and support these farms. Personally, I'm, I'm, you know, this is just what I'm passionate about and I have a particular. Interest in this community because I have deep roots here and I live here, I have a farm here. I would love to see the Chattahoochee Hills be a model for the rest of the country, this is an, this is not an issue that is unique to the Chattahoochee Hills. This is an issue that is happening and is a major issue in every. Every community, we work in communities all over the country where this is, this is a major challenge. How do you continue to grow and develop and at the same time preserve rural character and preserve agriculture and have have local food, right? This is, this is a challenge, it's a real challenge, and 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 there's, there's, so I'm personally dedicated to it. But I would not call it a personal initiative, I think a lot of my work in this initiative was was actually initiated by some locals concerned citizens who said, hey. You know, we want to see this, we want to see the Chat Hills grow in this way, right, we would love to see these farms protected. We want to see more young farmers like you be able to come here and actually have your farm here, we want to support and go around and visit a bunch of farms and have. So that's, there's a citizen driven effort.
Energy that's been paying for some of that.
Correct, yeah, yeah, there's been local residents in the Chat Hills who have helped fund some of, some of this initial work. You know, Steve, who's in the room, who had been doing some of this work twenty five years ago. Going, well, you know, where, if we're gonna build a community here that's based around agriculture and art and the environment and all these, and be a model of sustainability and conservation. Agriculture is a pillar, it needs to be a part of that. And so, you know, early on, there was some initiatives to try to do, get landowners on board with this, this idea, and it it led to the city and the zoning and. The platform that we have that a lot of cities don't have, and a lot of cities are way behind where the Chattahoochee Hills are as far as being able to. Have the kind of zoning and the precedent of, you know, of a conservation village, community and a draw like Serenby is. But we we do need to figure out, and this is not, this is, this is not a blame on anybody because it's a issue everywhere, we got to figure out how to. Continue to have farmers in our communities and continue to have farmland in our communities. That's a personal opinion.
So Darren, that, that. Still doesn't make it clear. So, so I've been around for a while too and I understand that need, I understand the Conservancy. Think about new residents, you're trying to explain that to, for example, I just met, you know, the young farmer last month, I was doing a newsletter story on. And I, it was the first time I heard of the Farmers Trust and all that, I knew you were doing something, I didn't know what, I didn't know if I could connect you guys or if that's what you were doing. I almost feel like whoever's doing it, if it's the Conservancy. Please put up a one pager that clearly defines what it is, so as more people have an interest, we know what to say and where to point them. Because right now I really don't, I don't know if it's Conservancy, I mean, I know, I know you're, you're totally into the farms and work with us on the Rico crossroads, but. I just don't know how to explain it to the residents is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, and that's, that's a great, it's a need that we, and I think the Conservancy, you know, initially when I first started looking at this. And looking at other examples around the country and we kind of stumbled, you know, we, I'd worked with the Agrarian Commons, Conservation Fund was already active in this area. I I think, I think what has become more clear to me and now, you know, stepping on the board of the the Chat Hills, because I think actually the Conservancy is in a really good position, it's under resourced. You know, to do this, there's no budget to dedicate to anybody leading this effort right now, other than a little bit of community support and philanthropy, there is no real budget for this yet. Like I said earlier, I think there's opportunities to raise money to to activate. The education you're talking about that we need, the communication that we need. For residents, for new residents, for old residents, for potential funders and and land trusts and developers to understand. What the goals and the opportunities are and how we can, how we can do this as a community. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with you, and I think, I think at this point, I feel like the Conservancy is probably best. Position to help play that role in partnership with the city to do that outreach. And to help provide that kind of one pager on, on the kind of the why and the what and the how. So, yeah, well, it's a, it's a great point and I agree with you, it's something that we need to do.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I had a question, so when you were talking about the rest, because I've been asked this and I get confused, but the rest of the state of Georgia has what, a ten year exemption you can get? For conservation use of your land or something like that? I don't, I don't even, is that program just fall flat or does it work in conjunction with what we're doing? Can you do both?
You can, you can do, here it's COVA, like if you put your land in conservation, it's, it's a temporary tax exemption if you're actually farming your land and it kind of renews every ten years and. It's a good program for folks that are actually farming so that they're, they're a little relief on taxes. But that's all it does, there's no long term conservation in that, it's a temporary kind of incentive for farming and a lot of people. Don't do much farming, they kind of go, you know, kind of the minimum. Thing that they can do to, yeah, yeah, some hay or.
Oh, and they just probably pay the penalty, right, someone offers them some money and they're like, I'll pay the penalty and get out of this.
Yes, that, and it's a good. Yeah, usually they're running. Yeah, they don't want, it's, it's a pretty good, it's got some teeth where there's enough incentive for folks to stay in it. But it's, it's not, it's not addressing. So I think, I think there's three, three approaches to raising money, I think one is, one is, sorry.
I thought we were switching subjects, go.
We are, did we finish that though? I'm sorry, I just jumped into another caution. No. I think there's kind of three approaches, I think the TDRs and PDRs and DTC is a good long term approach, it's a critical long term approach to having some. Funding coming into the city, into the Conservancy to, you know, to support the conservation of open space and farms. But it's, I don't know when it's going to start kicking in, it could be years. And it could be a slow trickle, right, so I don't know that there's, that that may be, that may be very valuable. But it also may be a little bit too late to really have the impact that we could have if we could get funding. You know, preemptively. And I think the strategies there are largely going to be philanthropy, I think fundraising and grants through government foundations and other and individual donations. To support these, and there's precedent for that happening, when you have a good project with a good story, protecting an amazing farm, supporting, you know, a really interesting farmer, farmer family. Adding value to the community, people get behind that stuff, they do, and there's money out there for that, philanthropic money to support that. And I I think we have all the ingredients here to, to make that happen. And I, I think we have all the ingredients here to, to make that happen. Takes, takes effort, takes storytelling, it takes pulling project together, it takes stakeholder engagement, it takes fundraising, it takes all this stuff. And then I think the third lever is the development community that's here. You know, I think when, you know, I had suggested on one of the new projects that, you know, is coming into the Chad Hills that they contribute to this fund as a way to give back to the community. Say, okay, we're going to come in here and develop whatever we're going to develop. Part of our contribution is that we're going to give money to the conservancy to help preserve some farms and activate this. It's going to be good for them. It's actually a good investment. And it's also a really nice way to contribute to supporting the community that they're going to, you know, be able to, you know, generate value out of. I think those are the main funding streams. And if others have other ideas, bring them on. I mean, the conservancy is a nonprofit. We can raise money into the conservancy. Um, the city can go after all kinds of grants through the city. I think we just need capacity to like kickstart some of that education outreach.
It's always our problem, right? You have all the plans and vision, but you don't have the money yet and it's, you know.
Yeah.
And those lines cross, that's the key. Darren, thanks very much. I appreciate you coming in.
My pleasure. Thank you. Important topic.
Help to move this thing forward. Uh, next up is our agenda review. And, um, first one is a rezoning thing, Mike, that you're going to walk us through. Some interesting.
Yes, yes, interesting. Reminded of the joke, I guess it's a joke. I thought I was wrong once, but it turns out I was mistaken. We, we, we have, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll walk through it and, and, and get to that reference in a second. So we have a, a proposal to rezone three parcels from eight, uh, from RL Rural to HMMU Mixed Use Hamlet to expand Saranby. Two of them are on Watkins Road, one of them, the larger one, over twenty acres, um, contains a single-family home. Um, there's another small, um, one-acre parcel also on, on Watkins Road, that fronts Watkins Road. Both of those parcels touch the recently rezoned, um, F farmettes or F lots um, that were recently rezoned by, um, by council. And, um, the plan that was submitted with the application um, uh, does not show any additional development on either of those lots. Um, it does propose a two-acre lot to be defined around the existing home on the twenty-odd acres. And, um, the other, the other one-acre lot would just be open space. And then it proposes, um, a, a couple of additional lots, um, up on the neighboring F lot farmettes as a part of the concept plan that's, um, that submitted, proposed as a part of this. So it would cluster four of those F farmet lots together, um, adding a couple, a little bit of density there. But again, not on the subject property that's, uh, proposed for rezoning. Um, the application also included a third, uh, parcel. Um, uh, staff had believed that that parcel had been left off of two thousand, uh, twenty eighteen rezoning when the Art Farm and quite a bit of other land was rezoned all in, in one, um, one go. Uh, chunk of Kuwaita County and some stuff on the west side of, of Saranby. Um, turns out that parcel actually was included in that rezoning. I've got the, uh, packet here, maps and legal descriptions that, uh, uh, showed that to me today. Um, so, uh, that parcel does not need to be included. It's already, um, HMMU. Um, but that's off of Watkins Road, off of the end of Rock Hill Drive. Um, if, uh, uh, if you want to make the, um, amendments to accommodate that change, um, we would eliminate tract three from the legal description attached to the ordinance. And we could eliminate, um, condition seven, which says any, proposed condition seven, which says any improvement on Rock Hill Drive must remain within the right of way. Not bad to go ahead and say it, but it's unrelated to anything we're really talking about here. And then the last sentence, uh, on number eight, which also no harm to leave it in, but it says no change to the November twenty twenty-two Art Farm Concept Plan is approved by this action. True whether it's in or not, um, but, but, um, removing that also would, um, accom- accommodate the, the realization that that parcel was, um, was already rezoned. Um, any questions, Don?
That is easy enough.
I have a question.
No big deal there. Lori, just one sec. The, the, the nice thing about this is it does remove the possibility of another driveway on Watkins Road. It, it does, uh, create the buffering on Watkins Road on the other parcels. It's, it's an improvement on what would be possible if this weren't happening. Lori, did you, you had a question, I think?
Uh, yes, um, Mike, the, the information in the packet said that the draft minutes from the planning commission were included and I didn't see them in the packet. Could you read those, please?
Uh, you want to read the, the two pages of minutes?
Well, they're not in the packet and I have no way of looking at them. Um, I remember there was a good bit of discussion at the public hearing from a gentleman there. So I'd like that specifically, um, addressed.
Okay, I mean, to be clear, that all of that comment, I think, was about this parcel that's not even being rezoned.
That's, that's right, that's right. Most of the, um, most of the discussion was, was about that, that particular parcel. Um, I believe that you, you, you received them by email. I guess you haven't had a chance to see, um, that those, I can, um.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to go ahead and read the whole?
Yeah, go ahead. I don't think it's relevant.
Okay, great. So, um, it was June fifteenth, uh, public hearings, um, subject was recommendation on an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone twenty-three point three-four acres from the RL Rural District to the HMMU Mixed Use Hamlet District. Application consists of three parcels, two on the west side of Watkins Road adjacent to the recently rezoned F lots and one east of Atlanta Noonan Road, just beyond the dead end of Rock Hill Drive. Mr. Cloud read the rules for the public hearing and opened the hearing. Mr. Morton presented the item. The proposal is to rezone twenty-three point three-four acres to expand the Saranby Hamlet. The application consists of three parcels. Two parcels on Watkins Road are adjacent to the recently rezoned F farmettes. The smaller one-point-one acre parcel will become part of the open space and the larger, and on the larger parcel, a two-acre lot around the existing home will be defined and two one-acre lots will be added to the existing F farmettes. The other parcel is just over one acre east of Atlanta Noonan Road located at the end of Rock Hill Drive. That parcel was included in the buffer variance application that the planning commission heard in October of last year, but it was later discovered that the parcel had never been zoned hamlet. That is the, um, incorrect information that we, we just discussed. It was rezoned to the Hamlet in twenty eighteen. Uh, this is intended to clean that up. Some of the property will end up serving as district buffer for the Art Farm. The following people spoke in support of the eye.
Say again, to be clear, that, that last section was referencing the property that's already zoned.
Correct.
And doesn't actually need any action.
That's correct.
So just to be clear, go on.
Garnin.
Uh, I'm not, Tom, I'm not clear. Is that the one acre that you're talking about or the other parcels?
It's the one acre.
So it was already zoned Hamlet?
Correct. There was a, there was a, I, I think just a, looking at the maps and not catching something about it and staff thought that that one didn't get zoned previously. But since putting all this together has recognized that it actually was in the original zoning package, what, two years ago, right? Like.
Twenty eighteen.
Yeah, twenty eighteen, sorry. So unfortunately, all the commentary around that was unnecessary because it's already been zoned for four years.
Okay. Okay, then I, I don't need any more clarification on that. That was my only concern.
Okay, sorry Lori, I, I, you probably didn't hear me say that. I, I know it's kind of tough this way.
Apologies on those, um, on those draft, uh, minutes. And also you'll note the first page, uh, we discovered when we, uh, were alerted to that problem. The first page of the proposed, um, uh, uh, conditions was, was also excluded and, uh, that got sent to you again today. Obviously you haven't had a chance to see that yet. I've also distributed it here to council members present.
I mean, again, those are our normal conditions.
That's right, that's right. Although the first page, yep, the first plate, page is boilerplate. The ones on the second page, which were included in the, in the packet, number seven and eight are unique to this.
Right, and number seven references the property that's not actually in need of rezoning.
That's right.
And the one sentence at the end of eight also references that property, but it's immaterial because it's a fact regardless of whether rezoning is needed or not.
That's right.
So we'll amend, Lori, when we, when we put that one in accordingly to clear that out.
Okay.
And the remainder of number eight really just says that the concept plan, um, will be the rezoning plan for the, for the western two parcels.
Okay, good deal. Um, and then next up is our TSPLOST, uh, thing and Robbie has an update on that.
Yeah. It's working. Uh-oh. The mic's not on. A little bit. I know that people on, uh, people on Zoom having a hard time hearing, so I want to make sure I'm extra clear. But, um, um, Good evening, Mayor Council, TSPLOST that, uh, Mayor just referenced, uh, is we have a bid out right now. We put it out at the beginning of June and it's been advertised. Instead of going over the agenda report, which I have in, in your council packets, uh, that I put together to give you kind of a background of this information, because I wanted you to have as much possible information before the bid opening was set, uh, for, on the tenth. But what we've done is we've worked with our engineer and, uh, we've received some comments from contractors out there that there's some information that they still need in order to provide a successful bid. So we said, okay, we'll put a denim out there and we'll extend this until, uh, July twenty-fourth. So the bid opening is going to go to July twenty-fourth, the next week. Give more time for the contractors to be able to provide us a more responsive, responsible bid. And then we'll put it on the August first agenda. So I say all that to say, uh, I'm going to request the, the mayor council if they would table it next week until August first. Uh, and I think you'll be happier with the results by doing that.
And again, the key to all of that was we were hoping to have information and what we don't have and won't have for the, until the next meeting, so.
Yes, sir.
Well, that impede our ability to, um, get this stuff done before it gets too cold.
No, it won't. I've talked to some of the contractors that are interested and if we can, uh, on August first, if we award it, which I hope that happens, then we do a notice proceed and typically it'll take some time for them to mobilize and stuff. And one contractor said they'd be ready to go in September. So you have September, October, November, December, so. We have. We have. It gets into December, it gets a little iffy. You're right.
It is, it's concerning that it's this late, but we still have time.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, next up is, uh, twenty-three dash oh-two-three, Mike, that's the hotel.
Right, so that's right. So we received, um, five special use permit applications, um, from, uh, from, from Saranby. Uh, two for hotels and three related to, uh, the development of a wellness center. Um, uh, boarding house, medical lab and rehabilitation facility, um, there. Um, I want to clarify for anyone who received the, um, the notification letters, because four of the permits were, um, distributed to the same list. Um, the letter that they received said, we've received an application for four special use permits. And then for the people by the Saranby, in the Saranby Hotel area, they received a letter that said, we've received an application for a special use permit. Um, I, I understand that there may be some, um, confusion, some people thinking that the four referring to the hotel down in Motto means that the Selburne Hotel is not happening. I just wanted to be clear with everybody, anybody who might be getting the message, there were five actual permits, two separate hotels. Um, it's just the, the way the letters are sent out and I regret not having been adding that extra line of clarity in the letter. Um, but it is the normal way that we notify people and tell them what, what's related to that particular area. Um, so anyway, um, this is, this, uh, this first one is for a special use permit for ten-point-one-five acre parcel um, in Selburne. Uh, it's across Selburne Way from the Hill Restaurant. Um, and right up at the top of the arc, um, east of the creek and west of Selburne Way. Um, the proposal is for a one-hundred-and-nine key hotel that includes a four-hundred-seat ballroom and conference rooms and a one-hundred-and-fifty-seat restaurant. Um, that part, um, that property, um, there's also a plan for a, a restaurant and an office building. Those are not part of the subject here. They don't require special use permits, only the hotel does. Um, but, uh, the current target date for construction would be, um, November of twenty twenty-three. And, um, uh, the, um, uh, anyway, we will have, um, some proposed conditions and further analysis as, as we, what for each of these, um, at the, for the planning commission and for the next meeting.
The, the key there is that that has been on the plan since, since I built my house there. It's, it's so long that nobody's surprised by it, so at least shouldn't be, so. Uh, to your point, right, the normal conditions that we would have to make sure everything's safe, but nothing surprising about that one. Does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Go on up next.
Okay, so the next one is, uh, the, the other hotel, that's the Motto Hotel. Um, because this property, um, that the hotel would be occupying is, um, has not been subdivided. It's actually quite a huge, um, piece of property and in the tax record, it's actually, uh, they're not up to date on all the subdivisions. So because we base our notifications on the tax records, um, we use, um, uh, the larger almost one-hundred acres, I'm sorry, almost ninety acres of the two parcels for our notification, um, notification boundaries. So the people who received the notification got notification for the hotel and the wellness center. They're in two very different locations in, um, in Motto. And in fact, the address for that parcel, talking about how, um, old this, uh, information is on the undivided parcel, says, um, that the address is, uh, one oh-nine-five oh Hutchison Ferry Road rear. That's the address for the inn, um, not, not excluding the rear, for the rear portion. So, um, again, just trying to be clear, that's the official address. Anyone who would look it up would be using it. That's why we used it. Um, but, uh, two very different locations for these. So the Motto Hotel proposes, um, uh, is proposed to be built on, um, about an acre, a little larger than one acre site south of the current Motto development, but north of the Kuwaita County line. So in that bottom, uh, bottom portion of Motto, parking lot on the west side or if you're headed down toward the Kuwaita County Road, that'd be the, the right side of the road. The hotel itself on the east side or would be the left side if you're driving down that way. That part of the property, the east side drops down pretty precipitously. It's, uh, um, I think about a seventy-foot drop down to the, to the, the creek or the edge of the parcel there. And, uh, my understanding is that the hotel would, um, uh, take advantage of that slope. And, uh, I don't know, I know there was some draft architecture. I don't know if it's what the, what would actually be built. But, uh, um, the plan was that it would be, have a very low profile on the roadside and then have a, have a face that faces the, uh, um, the, uh, the inside of the, I mean, the, the creek there on the, on the inside or the, I don't think it's actually a creek, creek, I think it's a wash on the inside there. Um, so that would be a hundred-room hotel, which would include a restaurant and a spa. And, um, uh, it's in this larger, um, forty-five acre parcel on one side, forty-four acre parcel on the other side of the road. Um, but it, the site itself would be about eight acres.
And that's also been in the plan for Motto since the very first time the plans for Motto came out. So again, no surprise to anybody that lives in Saranby. Next.
Okay, Katie has the next one, the wellness center.
Okay, yeah, um, this one is kind of in three parts because there's three special use permits for seven-point-one-six acres at the rear of one oh-nine-five oh Hutchison Ferry Road. Uh, what Mike was just talking about, uh, specifically the northwest corner of Promfield Road and Saranby Lane. Uh, the applicant's original proposals were to allow medical laboratory, rooming house and a rehabilitation center in the Mixed Use Hamlet, Hamlet District. Um, the applicant has requested to withdraw the application for the rehabilitation center because the UDC's definition of, uh, rehabilitation center does not match their intended use. Uh, the definition in the UDC specifically refers to a drug or alcohol rehabilitation center and not in like an occupational ther- therapeutic, uh, rehabilitation center. Uh, the applicant wishes to move forward.
So to be clear, they're doing the therapeutic rehabilitation.
Exactly, exactly. Not the, not the other kind. Um, the applicant wishes to move forward with the applications for the medical laboratory and the rooming house, just leaving out the rehabilitation center. Um, the Wellness Hub, uh, which is the kind of catch-all for all three of these, or I guess two of these, will be located in the Motto neighborhood at the corner of Promfield Road and Saranby Lane. Uh, currently where the meal kiosk is currently located and along Promfield Road across the street from the Saranby Pool and the Acton Academy. Um, it's part of a larger forty-four acre parcel. Uh, in addition to the medical laboratory and rooming house, uh, the Wellness Hub will include medical offices, treatment centers, residences, retail and a restaurant. Uh, the latter uses do not require special use permits. Uh, the applicant, uh, applicant, the applicant's plan includes a five-to-ten-thousand square foot medical facility, which would house the medical laboratory and other medical offices. Um, the proposed rooming house will be an eighteen-unit complex divided into three attached clusters of six rooms. Um, meals, housekeeping, uh, companion care will be provided. Any nursing or medical services will be provided by the nearby medical facility. And, um, that's pretty much it. Further discussion and staff recommendations will follow the first read.
And again, this is in that little commercial section of Motto that has always shown commercial buildings. Again, shouldn't be surprised, anybody. Any questions about that one?
No.
Okay, uh, next is the development agreement, right? Yeah, the development agreement twenty-six. Who's talking about that one? Is that Robbie? I think so, yeah.
It's going to be a, a more of a, an attorney presentation. It's gonna be a, uh, more of a, an attorney presentation. Rick Lindsay, he's in another meeting. He's going to try to jump on Zoom as soon as he can, but he may not be here in time, obviously for this topic. Uh, he's not here now, but this is a, a hotel motel tax, uh, development agreement with, uh, with the hotels going into Saranby. Uh, they are working with the Fulton County Development Authority and at the end of this month, the development authority is going to vote, um, to, to approve this, uh, development agreement on their end. And what this does is it allows the hotels to, the, the hotel motel taxes can be collected from these two hotels, which we don't see today. It's not money we have now, uh, to go toward, um, a marketing of these hotels designated to marketing of these hotels, um, in that regard. And so that's kind of where that agreement, that's a, that's a real high overview of it right now.
And, and my understand, and, and probably best for Rick to explain this further at the meeting, but my understanding is that Fulton County Development Authority is allocating a portion of their taxes actually to the debt relief on the hotel. And this is one of their asks of us to make sure that that C V B money goes toward the marketing of that, which it's supposed to go to anyways.
Right. And we have a meeting, uh, with the CBB, the, the chairman's here. We have a meeting on Monday, uh, with the CBB because they also have to sign off on that because they would not be receiving those monies for tourism and development product. But in a good way, I mean, it's still going toward the same direction. It's going toward marketing and tourism and such. So it's just, it, it really does help the opportunity for these hotels to exist. And, um, when this presentation was being done by, by Mike and, uh, well, Mike and you guys with the hotels coming in Saranby, we, we do have a very big need for, for hotels in this area. I mean, we have a lot of folks looking for rooms for various different events, equestrian events up at Buchard Farms, Saranby. That we have issues with that. They've lost events at Buchard Farms because there's no place to stay. Um, so we have a need for that.
Well, yeah, all those people are driving up to Fairburn and whatnot.
Right.
Capturing any of the benefit for any of that.
So I don't know if, I mean, the chairman of CBB is here and he's worked, I don't know if Steve, you had anything to add, keeping it kind of high level, but.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions on this?
Oh, yeah, Tom.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't understand it. Oh, I'm sorry. Am I, can you hear me?
You're good. You're good. Yes, ma'am.
I don't understand all, cause there really wasn't anything in the packet and I'm not understanding what you're saying. I don't know that I need to understand it now, but can there be some time for you guys between now and the council meeting for a sit down to explain to me what you're talking about?
For sure. And, and what, what I'll do actually is have Rick reach out to you because Rick's been working on this with the development authority. Uh, it's, it's kind of a pro forma thing from our end, but, but it is a legal requirement. So I'll, I'll just have Rick walk you through if that's all right.
Okay.
All right. And then the next thing is, uh, 23 dash 027, which is a donation from Brickworks, uh, for community outreach. Which.
Yeah, we just, we just need.
It's an amazing thing that they're doing.
Right.
Uh, community brick works is, uh, has a, a very robust now fundraising program that runs all of the amazing services they already do. Uh, but one of the things they've recognized as, as Ruby has too, is that we could be doing more outreach stuff. And so donating some money to help support that community outreach is something that they've leaned into and, and they're making this donation. And in Chattahoochee Hills, we have to accept donations, uh, officially accept them in the city council. So, uh, we will do that with great thanks on, on Tuesday.
It, yes, sir.
That's, yeah. All right. That's it for the agenda. Then we have a couple of other, uh, conversational points, uh, some different things that've come up over the course of the last month. Uh, there was a conversation, uh, that came up because of, uh, one of the community events, uh, where, uh, like the little vendors in town, people that do craft kind of stuff, uh, and are selling it these events. Um, just a question of whether they needed business licenses and how that worked. Lori, do you want to, you want to talk about that some more?
I'm sure. We've sort of been around the block with that, um, since they're city sponsored events. We sort of felt obligated to ensure, uh, if their businesses, that they have a business license or to ask the question, when is one needed, when is not? So we're thinking for, uh, like sound vendors or, or, or professional services like that where someone has a standalone business, that's sort of their sole income. We should ensure that they have a business license and there is a liability waiver they sign as part of the vendor form too. But we want to attract local vendors, selling their jewelry and their crafts and, and those kinds of things. Um, s- s- so we wanted to be careful and ask the council how we go about doing that without being over restrictive and requiring, you know, little folks doing this to have a business license? Or is there a different kind of business license? Just have that discussion.
And so in that thread Dana, you got some thoughts on that?
Um, yeah.
Who's responsible for business licenses?
So, um, currently our business license ordinance does not distinguish between the hobby type businesses. Um, basically if somebody has a business, um, and they're not working for a company, getting paid, getting a W two, they need to get a business license. Um, I did take a look at, um, our business license list and it can be a little bit difficult because several, many businesses that are home-based businesses elect to pay a flat rate, um, as opposed to reporting their gross receipts. So I have no way of knowing what they're making. Um, but I would suggest if we wanted to do something like this, um, where we wouldn't require a hobby business to get a business license, that we would use instead of the type of business, maybe a gross receipts. Um, so I took a quick look, not including short-term rentals. That's kind of a different animal. Um, but I looked at those that report on gross receipts and report less than a thousand dollars. And there were five of those that, you know, and I just picked that number. Um, so you know, that might be a way we could go about it. Um, you know, it's a little difficult to regulate that, but you know, it's kind of.
The whole thing works on the honor system anyway.
Well, I was about to say, it's difficult to regulate home-based businesses anyway. So that.
Ask you a question. The, the hobby business, isn't that defined as, I mean, you're not making a, really a profit. Like the guy who's out here building birdhouses and wants to come up here for a little community picnic and sell them. I don't think that's what we're talking about, right? But you're talking about, I think Lori, is Lori talking about the vendors that come in here?
Well, I think she's, I, it might be two parts, but, but I think it came about because there was a local person that wanted to do something at one of the, the, um, the events. And there was a question of whether or not that person needed a, a a business license. So I think we could address both of those.
I think there are absolutely people that just do things for our little events, right? And to your point, they maybe make a couple hundred bucks in a year. They're doing it for fun. They shouldn't need a business license, probably.
Tom, um, what would you think, or Dana, what would you think about having a, a special work in, uh, a special events business license of $10 that is added to the vendor fee? So if someone already has the business license, they don't pay it. If it's, if they're just coming to exhibit. I, I don't know. I, I want to encourage people, not discourage them, but I don't want anyone in trouble with the law either. So I'm just trying to figure out if there's an easy way, a painless way to do this without discouraging people.
Um, I, that, that probably, I don't know if that's something that I hate to say, you know, something for Rick to look at, cause more, the business license is more of an occupational tax than a license. Um, so I think we probably would be better to, and again, I haven't really discussed this with Rick, but to maybe, you know, do, uh, uh, if you make under a certain amount per year, you don't need.
It's, 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 I think it's the same, it's the same answer through a different route.
Yeah.
And that one probably is easier for you administratively.
Right. Yes.
Right. So, I mean, let's, let's, uh, let's draft something.
Okay.
And we'll bring something into a future council meeting that, that addresses that. Is that all right with everybody?
It sounds good.
All right. Uh, the next one is, uh, an issue that's come up a couple of times recently. There's some conflicting language in a couple of the boards and commission, uh, in the charter. Uh, it's very clear on planning and zoning. It's not as clear on other commissions as to whether or not non-residents can be on them. And the reason that it came up was that at one point years ago, uh, the person that had been in charge of the Cochran Mill Nation Center for years and years, uh, this is before our annexation of the land, uh, to the northeast of the city, uh, was, wanted to be on the Parks Commission and we wanted her to be on the Parks Commission. But she lived about, uh, a hundred yards outside of the city, even though she worked in the city in the park every day. Been there for 20 years, all of that. And, and so we, we, uh, made a change, uh, to allow that to happen. And, uh, everybody seemed fine with that at the time. Uh, and again, you know, there's some question as to whether or not we were allowed to make that change, but you know, we did. And, and it's come up again recently because there's a member of the historic commission who has lived at times in the city, full-time, part-time, uh, right now is not. Her, her mom still lives here. She's been on the historic commission for a couple of years, uh, is not living here full-time now. Uh, but is also an actual trained historian and has, you know, actual education in the subject matter, still wants to participate. And, and again, the question is, uh, does the rule, which is not perfectly clear in the charter, need to be changed to make it perfectly clear, either that it's allowed or not? And the city attorney agrees that it would be better to make it perfectly clear. Uh, that could be done under home rule, which is our ability to change those rules that don't have conflicting rules from the state government. And this is one of those areas that we can change under home rule. And I guess, uh, the, the thought I want to add to this is that none of this can ever possibly happen without a positive vote of the council, right? And so, you know, if in the historic commission or the parks commission, there is somebody who for whatever reason, uh, involvement as a volunteer or whatever, uh, wants to be on it and the city council believes that that's for the best of the city, then they can vote to let that happen. And for whatever reason, they don't believe, they can vote to not let it happen. But I do absolutely agree that it would be better to clarify our language to make sure one way or the other. I know there are different opinions about whether we should even let it happen. So I'm, I'm happy to.
Well, you know, we let it happen because
it made sense.
Common sense thing to do. Taking government out of the way. What you need to do to pay it.
Mm-hmm. But I mean, you know.
I can't hear you. Sorry. Tom, could you restate?
Richie was just saying that, you know, to, to him, it was just a common sense thing that we had done at the time. Um, I, I'm, again, other thoughts. Laura, I know you've got thoughts on this. Camille.
Yeah. I mean, initially when we were talking about with the, in, as it relates to this, the historic commission, my thoughts were, you know, with 3,000 people, we may not have people with the expertise, knowledge, skills, whatever. And it might be okay to look, you know, have folks from the outside that could be a part of some of those commissions. I mean, and in the future too, right? I mean, maybe an arts commissioner, public safety commissions, or all these other commissions that may come about.
There's, there's one other point that I need to make sure everybody understands too. All of our commissions are only recommending bodies. They do not make any policy decisions. They only recommend policy decisions that are voted on by the city council who's elected. So there's that piece to it. No, go ahead.
No, it just says right here, you know, it's, it's for changing to serve on boards and commission to make sure that, you know, the planning, um, you know, they should always.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. There's a, I think we live in a community where we still know each other, a lot of us. And that's the only reason Mary Beth put on there years ago. And, uh, this last time, oh, we did what we did. It is hard to volunteer, especially ones that educated in that field. I, I, I personally say you leave it the way it is. Give yourself the ability. Well, yeah, we need some language and it may.
That's the thing. We'll clean up the language.
Boards come from our citizens and these other ones, council can, you know, do what they want to, as long as it's not a guy out of bucket.
Well, again, you wouldn't vote for that person.
Um.
No, we try to keep it community out of it as best we can, but I mean, we gotta, we gotta recognize.
Lori.
Oh, yeah. So, so since we've had some of that discussion, you know, got a little bit more input from some other residents and there's a strong feeling that we should have residents serve on those commissions. Now, you know, it's a small poll unless you, uh, do a survey of everyone in the city, you're never going to know. But I have a strong, uh, feeling that we have enough residents to make a body of the commission. And if we don't, we probably shouldn't have the commission. Maybe it's not the right time for it, but, um, I, I think we have enough residents to do that. Since then, there's been a other couple of people that said, hey, I, I, I wouldn't mind serving on the historic commission. We, maybe we don't do a good enough job of reaching out every year as those seats come up to recruiting other people or just saying, you know, bringing more people into the fold. Cause it's, there's not that many commission seats anyway. Um, some people may have that interest in serving. Anyway. Um, so I, I'm really not in favor of, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, of making the, uh, language clear. And right now the charter language says the mayor shall nominate, uh, 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 something like an appropriate resident. It's the ordinance language that's not clear that specifies the planning commission needs to be resident. See other commissions, it, it's silent on that. I would like to change those other commissions to state that they need to be residents as well.
That is heard. And, and, and again, I, I, you know, I've seen some of that conversation too. And, and one of the common narratives seems to be, you know, we don't want non-citizens making decisions for us. And again, I, I just want people to recognize that they don't make any decisions on anything. Um, but, uh, point taken Lori and, uh, I'll, I'll talk to Rick and see if we can get some language together for us to look at some specific language then that we can either vote on or not.
Could you do where it's like no more than, no more than whatever number of people on a commission can be non-citizens? I'm just thinking of a, of a compromise potentially that limits, but yet satisfies potentially a need or a gap. I don't know.
I'm sure he'd pipe up a few. He, he and I'll talk about that. All right. Next up is, um, sanitation. We've had the issue again where some people, because of, uh, city of South Fulton went to a single service provider for, uh, trash pickup in the entire city, which means that whether or not you were happy with who you had, you have to use who they hired. And when they did that, apparently there were some addresses that they had in their system as being in South Fulton that were actually in Chattahoochee Hills. And, uh, a couple of people here, for whatever reason, who were serviced by the provider who was also providing in city of South Fulton, now we're not in the city and lost their service. I think most of those have been sorted out since then. Uh, but there may be a couple of people that are still having problems. We know we have this regular problem where, you know, the, the 10 vendors that serve some piece of the city or whatever, sometimes will drop a customer and they have a hard time finding somebody. Have Lori, have you heard? Are, are there people that are still without service? Cause a couple of people that I had talked to have all picked up service again.
I checked last week and there were at least two people that hadn't had their trash picked up in four weeks.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, other people are still having problems and they, they just don't know. GFL has picked up one out of two of their garbage cans. They don't know if their service is canceled. I, I think that's the other ongoing problem is GFL has just really poor customer service. And we don't know. It's, it reminds me of, um, of, of what was that Seinfeld movie with the soup Nazi where you're almost afraid to ask him any questions? Cause they'll just say, no service for you, you know? So.
Of course, they're the ones providing for city of South Fulton would probably be the most likely ones that will be bidding on our project, which is the, the kind of scary thing about this. Um, Robbie, you've put together a proposal, an RFP, right? To, to at least see. Cause one of the things that we've had, and we've talked to people about this before, and I'm talking years ago, when we talked to people about providing service here, is that very few of them wanted to even bid. And we couldn't find anybody to bid when we talked about it 10 years ago because the city is so sparsely populated that they can't money, make money servicing it. Um, but we should, can ask the question at least and see if anybody would bid, right?
Right. We, I have a bid prepared, uh, that I can let and put out there for solid waste sanitation services. And I can do it one of two ways, you know, I can put it in there where it's exclusive, which they love because that means it's, they have more customers. Exclusive means you have to use a service. You don't have a choice. Uh, and then that means you're telling residents that this is what they have to use. I would make sure we exclude private communities. For instance, Saranby, they have their own sanitation, their private streets. That would be excluded. Um, and it, or you could make it non-exclusive. Probably from a resident standpoint, that's more preferable because you, your residents can say, no, I don't want that. Uh, I've got mine. I, I'm good with, with what I have. I don't want to use it, but then you risk not. But then you risk not getting anybody bidding, because they're gonna come in with the unknown. Do I, am I gonna service two residents, or am I gonna service two hundred residents? So, but I can let it if that's the desire of the council.
I, I think because right now, we don't really know what to talk about. Uh, we had this conversation, like I said, ten, twelve years ago. And we couldn't find anybody to bid, period. But the reason that we asked the question was because. When we had the conversation in public, a lot of people were like, hell no, don't, you're not telling me who I'm using for my trash service. Heck no. And, and we were like, okay, we don't even know if we can do it, so let's check and see if we can do it, and if there's something even to talk about. And the answer at that point was no, so there's no point in sticking your, stick into that hornet's nest. It, it, we should try again. Uh, if we get a quote, if somebody's actually interested in providing the service, then there's something for the city council actually to talk about. Uh, if we can't get a quote, then, then we're back to what do we do if there are one or two houses that cannot get service in the city? And that's a, that's a different conversation. Yes, ma'am.
Could we add to that one other option, please? And that's that option we considered of having a convenience center. Like they have in Douglas County where, you know, it's just a, a chain link center with several hour roll offs. And then you charge residents as needed, um, to throw out their garbage. I, at least you get a quote on that to see, because the thing of it is. You never know when your trash service is gonna end, or there's gonna be a snafu. And when it happens to you, you're in a panic and there's nothing you can do. Thirty percent of our, our citizens, our senior citizens, they can't be, they don't want to be, I don't want to be lugging or burning my own trash, you know? Off every, i- if something happens. But anyway, my thought was if we could get that third quote to see what would a roll off cost, a, a convenience center cost. And then if, if we plan, I hope we plan to have one more town hall meeting before the end of the year. Could we poll the citizens with those three options and get a sense of what they want? I mean, we don't want to force travish, tra- uh, trash service on people if they're satisfied with it, or if they don't need it, you know, but. I feel like we need to do something.
Can, can you force an independent company to pick up your trash? People are allowed to tell you no.
No.
That's why we have dumps.
Yeah, if you do an exclusive agreement, technically, it becomes a code issue, and it happened in another city I was at, where if you did not pay. And now you can actually, uh, put it on a tax bill. So if they don't, it's tough. If you put on a tax bill, and if they don't pay for their sanitation services. Let's say they just pay their taxes, but they don't pay their fee for the year, you can actually put a lien on their property, which is not popular.
Well, I'll tell you this, I'm, I'm all for a couple dumpsters being put out for like a day or two. People clean out their houses or whatever, but we, we've tried that, and that's just, no. Overnight, there's so much frigging trash, mattresses, everything else. I don't see, and that, that winds up on him. And, and you know, I don't mean to sound rude, I hate, I've, I've, you know, my trash service has been cut off before too, I throw it in the back of my truck and take it to the dump. But you're gonna sit around your house for four weeks with trash piling up, I don't get that.
I mean, and, and so, so here's the thing, right? I think it's perfectly fine to go find out. If anybody would even bid on the service, so that we can talk about whether that's even a possibility. To find out what the cost of a roll off is, that, that program, so that we can decide whether the juice is even possibly worth the squeeze there. But I mean, to, to the point Richie's making. You know, my Hulu stopped working, can you fix that for me? I, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we use as. Services every day that aren't really necessarily the city's responsibility, right? And so. We have to also decide where we draw that line. Uh, we've worked a lot on trying to help people figure out how they can get private service providers. You've got a huge list. You've made a lot of phone calls to help people get signed up. We've worked on internet, even though that's not our responsibility, and you know, to talk Greystone into doing their thing. You know, there's, there's a lot of stuff like that where we can help, but I, I don't know that we necessarily want to be taking on the responsibility as a city.
The easy part is, you know, paying for it for a dumpster, that's the easy part. Finding out where to put it, that's the easy part. Putting a pad to put a dumpster down, that's the easy part. Fencing in, easy part. It's the management and the billing portion.
Yeah.
That's where it gets a little bit complicated. It's like, okay, like what Councilmember Smith is saying, is like, how do you control? Access and, you know, people just bring in whatever they're gonna do. You gotta.
Are the other convenience centers that you've listed, is it not? Is this considered, is that the issue too? Are these, have these been inconvenient, like the City of South Fulton option? Okay.
Yeah.
You're just, I mean, the one in Douglas. No, it, it's for, it can be, uh, uh, out of county residents, ten dollars a full load.
But, you know, Michelle and I can put the, the bid out on the street, and I would recommend doing it non-exclusive. That way, you know, the bidder knows whether it's GFL or Republic or, you know, or Waste Management, whatever.
Doing it is with a full bid contract, right? So let's see what that looks like.
Oh, in a full, like, exclusive? Okay.
Again, I don't think that there's community will behind doing that.
Yeah, there's not community will, yeah. And our thirty-eight miles of gravel roads make it a little bit more difficult, um, from a service standpoint. Uh, the company would have to have special, a lot of times the supervisor comes in a smaller vehicle instead of that larger vehicle, because if a manpower. Personnel power, they don't, they're now down to one person per truck, you don't have two persons, so they, they rely on automation. And so those big trucks are more automated, but they don't do well on gravel roads or narrow roads, and of course, I'm not gonna look at Darryl. When we talk about what would happen to those gravel roads if you have these trucks going up and down too, so that's an issue. Anyway, I'll, I'll put that out there. Michelle and I can do it, like, here, Lori.
I'll be one more question. When you put out the bid for exclusive. I don't know, this would make it non-exclusive. Is there any way you could also? Like half of the city? So here's my thought. We've got a couple of providers already that have been providing. Service to Chat Hills for a long time, Reliable, Pollard, there's a couple others. I don't wanna put any mom and pop business, business by doing this, but you know, if, if. I don't want to scare them off either, but you know, if there was the option for them to extend their service, and maybe we have two providers, a North Chat Hills and a South Chat Hills. They up their customer base, everybody gets good service. Just a thought, I don't know.
I mean, you can do, but that, I would recommend doing a non-exclusive franchise for that then, so that way. You make it non-exclusive, that others can bid on it or participate. Um, but also you put, you put in the language there that it's not exclusive from a provider standpoint. But it is exclusive from a citizen standpoint, where still everybody has to, it's, it's complicated to do it that way. Most, most of, I'm, I'm, I'm very good friends with a lot of people in this business, and they like the exclusive contracts.
Let's, let's see what we can get.
I'll do that.
And we'll have a conversation about it when we actually know what we can get. Alright, the next subject is, uh, council grant ideas, and I'm not sure what we're talking about here, Lori, what, what was your?
So, um, Ru- Ruby, who couldn't be here tonight, um. Has been talking about having a, a grant writer for the city for some time. Robbie mentioned that we do have a grant writer. And that the, uh, the grant writer has met with the. The, uh, the city leadership to get their input on what grants they might want. And we were thinking it'd be a good opportunity to have input from the council too. I don't know how that would work, but here I know that we have a couple of, um. Thing on, because one, there has a champion to move it forward, and two, there hasn't been any money. And I don't know how we start that conversation, um, is, if we talk about the Beaver's House. I've always thought maybe that conversation is, what if we start by asking Old Campbell County Historical Society? If we could get grants to improve that location for public use. And move them in there for the historical society, would they move? Because you have to have a purpose before you have the grant. If we had that purpose, then boom, we can finally do something with the Beaver's House. That might be the best opportunity for that location, since it's located on the north side of the town, which isn't heavily. Or used at this point, but many people travel from outside of Chat Hills to go to that Old Campbell County Historical Society, which is currently in. In, um, Palmetto. So that's not a far reach, plus that was the historic home of the Old Campbell County Historic. Um, Town Center. That's an idea. The Scout Hut is another idea, it's just sitting there waiting for something. I don't know how to, how to move that idea forward, other than to say, hey, if we have a grant writer. And we decide we want to. What things, what are those couple of things we wanted to look for? What are the big things that we could wanna do? Are there other big things that a municipality would qualify for? That's kind of the opening of that discussion.
So I, I know, I know the answer to the question. Uh, I will send an email to everybody, uh, tonight when I get home, asking them for a list of those things that they're interested in. That might be grant-worthy, and then we can have a conversation at the next workstation to prioritize those. And get some feedback from grant writers about which one of those are actually likely possible high.
Retainer, Jane, she's our consultant retainer, grant writer.
Fantastic. And, and if you want to add some insight, but I mean, I think as far as the prioritization, that's something the council needs to do too, right?
So I've, I've had a couple of conversations with them, and, um, so what she was saying, talking about the Beaver House. So I went ahead and looked that up, and the Beaver House is already registered on the National Historic, um, so you're eligible for some grants on the, on the federal level. Definitely, um, the only thing on the, lots of things that I looked up, there's a lot of money out there right now for, um. As far as, uh, roads and bridges and even wildlife, uh, what is not available right now is. Um, that's currently closed. Um, but I would look at things that were open now and getting ready to close. That's what I would. Prioritize first.
So, so here's, here's my question, or, or here's my suggestion. Right, we, we get a list together of these things, right? We look at what kind of money might be available, is it enough to do the project or whatever? And then also what the match requirements are, because a lot of them do have match requirements, right? And, and like, you know, if it's gonna cost a half a million dollars to the Beaver's House, and it's a forty percent match, that one's harder.
That's not always the case, though.
I, I know, I'm, I, I'm not saying it's always the case. What I'm saying is, let's go through the list. And find out what those things are, and then we can prioritize them based on the amount that we're gonna have to spend, and what our likelihood of getting them is, right? You've gotten feedback from a couple of council members, it sounds like.
Yes, yes, I've had conversations, several.
Perfect, perfect.
Got a question for Jane. Jane?
Yes.
So as far as what municipalities might be eligible for spending. Do you happen to know off the top of your brilliant head? If, um, there might be grants available for the city to rebuild its kitchen in this historic building we're in? Uh, for senior services, anything like that, uh, Fulton County has not been as helpful as we had hoped they would in. Providing us actual senior services. We'd like to do Meals on Wheels, but we need a adequate kitchen, and that's been top on, on our list. I don't know if. Because for a city, if we would be eligible at all.
So, I would have to look that up, uh, per se, but some of the things that I had looked up, um, and especially with, um, Darren, but he's gone already. Um, so you're looking at things like, what you want to do is. Decide what you, well, you could see what's out there and kind of, um. Build, facilitate a program around that, for like example, what you were talking about, um, you know, with the, oh, there's grants with like, um. Not only, uh, conservation, but there's also grants for, um, pavilions. Um, to do farmers markets in, and that's something that I noticed in your, uh, master plan in twenty eighteen. They had a nice pavilion type of, uh, plan. Um, so it's something that you want to build on and look for programs that will accommodate that. Um, and so, uh. Yeah, and so that one, like, there's a, uh, funding, um, at not only the historical societies. Um, but there's also the USDA. So it just depends on kind of like, the way I would do it is look at what. So I understand there's a RICO community that has done some planning, and that's associated with the master plan that was done in two thousand eighteen. So you kind of look at the planning that they've already done, and maybe try to find some programs around that. So as far as food, um. Uh, as far as food banks, yes, there's definitely funding for that, um. And, um, I would definitely attach, uh, renovation of a kitchen to that, especially for something Meals on Wheels for seniors.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get the list to you, Tom. Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, the next one is Community Brickworks yearly contribution. Uh, and, and this is the contribution that they're making to the city?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Is that directed or no?
Oh, that's the twenty-five hundred, and it, it's, it's undirected. It's twenty-five hundred, twice a year, I think.
Oh, I thought you were, well, that's, um, but, I thought we were talking about two separate things. We're getting two tranches, twenty-five hundred each for Brickworks, but. We also, the council allocated twenty thousand dollars for capital investment in the Brickworks, so we're working with them on, uh. Providing electricity and fans and that kind of stuff. So were we talking about the twenty thousand dollars that's been allocated or the?
I wasn't.
I thought, yeah.
We're talking about the, the new money that they've allocated. Um, what are we gonna do with it? How are we gonna spend it?
Oh, for community outreach?
Yes. I didn't know it was earmarked for community outreach.
Yeah, I think so. Alright, so you're wanting to take that, that kind of general category of community outreach and specify it more with more detail, Lori?
No, Tom, I just didn't know if that money, Community Brickworks was donated to the city was earmarked. If it's not earmarked, then I wanted to, to suggest it go to community outreach, but I thought that would be a council decision. I didn't know if it was decided already.
Oh, I, I, my understanding was that's what it was.
Can't hear you guys, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, Lori, we're just, we're just, I, 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 we think that that's what it was directed toward anyway.
Okay.
Well, I'll confirm that, but that, that was my understanding.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, thanks. And then the next one, a- again, Ruby's out, but I, I talked to her about this. The idea of putting in a speed table like the one that we have on Atlanta Noonan Road. Uh, on Rivertown near the Charter School, just to slow down traffic, uh, especially at pick-up and drop-off time. Uh, you've sometimes got people flying through there at high speeds, and that was a concern that several parents have brought up to her, uh, resident parents. And she wanted to talk about that. I don't know if we're better off just having that conversation when she's here next time. She was not expecting to not be here today.
Um, Tom, she, she really wanted me to push that forward, Tom.
Okay.
Tom?
Yep, go ahead.
I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, yes, since Robbie and I had looked at, so the Charter School was in my district before the redistricting. Robbie and I looked at the speed limits there and the traffic situation last year. We're still waiting on Georgia DOT to approve the speed limits we recommended a couple of years ago. Um, they still haven't done that, and Ruby said, why not just put a, a, uh, the speed table there? That will have the same effect of lowering the speed limit. Why don't we just talk about that and do that? Are there any negatives to doing that?
I mean, when school's over, you know, the rest of the citizens, you know, probably don't want to hit that. I mean, we're allowed to travel the speed limit outside of the school time, so I think the school needs to take their staff. And probably do a little better job, maybe have a flagman or something. We've been dealing with this for years. And now we're talking about putting a speed table on a little bit of public road to slow me down. When they've been turning around in yards for twenty years, uh, how long that school's been there, uh, they just need to, they need to manage themselves better.
Well, now, we just approved one on Watkins Road for Serene B, and I think there's a whole lot more traffic. And need for it over there by the Charter School.
Either way, I, I don't, you know, the citizens on Rivertown at, you know, midnight don't want to be hitting a speed trap, they're worried about deer. Especially if you're talking about a big elevated one that brings you down to ten miles an hour on the public road, that's, that's ridiculous. They can take two teachers out there with their little vest and their little pawns and, and do what they need to do. That's what needs to be done. We don't need to fix their problems. They need to fix their own.
Well, it's, there is a difference from my understanding between a speed table and a speed bump. And the ones over there on Watkins Road are the speed tables. The one inside Serene B is a speed bump, which really you can't go seven miles an hour over that, or you're gonna ruin your car. The speed table is just a softer, gentler one, um, and it really does just slow your car, it's not gonna take you out, but, uh. I think the other issue was, I don't remember offhand. I think the other issue was, I don't remember offhand what the suggested speed limit was there. Um that we submitted to DOT at that road, but I thought I remember Darryl telling me that you can't ticket anyone for thirty five miles an hour or lower. And I'm pretty sure that was the speed limit there. I mean, it was intentionally lower during school hours. But I mean, we don't have a flashing light. We don't have anything like other schools have.
Sorry, we've got the the chief here, so we'll.
So that's partially true. You cannot ticket anyone when it's thirty, when the posted speed limit is thirty five miles an hour. Or under as long as it is a residential district or. Um as long as it's not a residential district or in this case, it's a school zone. So we can ticket them. No matter what the school zone speed is, if it's during one hour before, during or one hour after the normal operation of the school. We can cite them for doing a mile over this speed limit. So it doesn't matter what what we, we can make the speed limit during school zone, ten miles an hour, and we can cite them for doing eleven over if we wanted to.
Um, the thing about the the school, I mean, you know, we have a a speed table in Coppermill Park where the trail crosses the road.
Correct.
Which is a very different situation because you've got people actively walking across the road all the time. There's no crosswalk.
Right.
Up by the school, that all the activity is happening on the one side.
That is correct.
Yeah, well, what's what's your opinion on that? I'm I'm curious about whether, I mean, again, you're you you and your guys are up there.
Right. So, well, this past year has been a little bit different because the school, we. For the longest, for the last few years, my officers were working off duty at the school and were also directing traffic and whatnot. The school didn't want us back for a couple of reasons. One of the reasons is that we were citing a lot of parents for doing. For speeding, for doing, and the parents were complaining to the school, so. The school didn't want us back anymore, so they hired security to to direct traffic. So that's fine. So during the school year, I know my officers do sit in the school zone. And they write speeding tickets. You know, um as far as a speed table, I I mean, I. Look, people are going to speed anyway. I mean, uh you know, I even when I teach radar and lidar, I I. You know, there's a law, you can't be hiding behind a billboard and stuff like that. We don't have to. I mean, I could sit on the side of South Fulton Parkway with a sign saying that I'm running radar. And I'm going to pull you over if you're speeding. And guess what? I'm still going to get speeders. So I mean, people are still going to speed, you know, um but. It to Councilman Schmidt's point, yeah, after, like, right now, the school isn't in session, you know, uh. I think the speed limit is forty five. I mean, Hamilton Redwine is fifty five. You know, so I I just, I don't, I. As far as the speeding, I, you know, I. I don't know if a speed table would make any, make a difference, to be honest with you. I mean, that's just my opinion.
That and and that was a professional opinion, not a political opinion. Thank you very much. You seem quite stressed to have this conversation. You're welcome to go sit back down. I appreciate it, Kevin.
Well, Kevin, I remember, I mean, I've been up there twice. I mean, where has been a million meetings about their traffic and all their problems and yet they bring it to us. I don't get that. It's your problem. It's not our job to solve their problems. And who cares? It's not my problem.
There's not a, there's not a crossing.
Not a cross area? Okay.
Yeah.
There's really a speed issue, not a, not a pedestrian issue. It's a speed issue, not a pedestrian issue.
And that's, so I guess you stand up there for the sign like Kevin said, please slow down, the kids are out. What what you do?
Well, and again, to to Kevin's point, people write tickets in school zones all day long. Uh I mean, I I'm I'm not sure where to go with that. I, you know, we can uh put something together for an up or down vote.
Uh, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
It would be helpful to know too, when G G dot is gonna change our speed limits.
It would be, I would be thrilled to know that myself. It it that has been such a bone of contention for me and I've talked to the commissioner about it. I, you know, they have a process and the process takes forever and.
Well, and and note to, this is a side issue, but it's related. Is that people on gravel roads are complaining now too about fast traffic and we don't have. And that would almost kind of be ridiculous to have a lot of signs posted. I think the answer to that was uh we got the answer that when the speed limit is not posted, it's automatically thirty five miles an hour. But then again, they can't give it tickets for thirty five miles an hour and underneath, but they can give tickets for driving recklessly. So somebody else suggested, well, what about uh speed tables on gravel roads? That would slow them down. Just to mention, it's a concern and we're bringing the concern to the council. So when residents in our district have the concern. We're bringing it and uh one of the concerns is on Jones Ferry Road. And as that road gets more populated, when the movie studio is built, you're likely to hear this concern some more, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree that it's a concern. I do, I I. You know, I there there are several layers of that conversation. One is when you're walking your dog on any road and a car drives by at the speed limit. It feels scarily fast. And there are just some people that are jerks that drive really fast. I you know, I I don't. I think. I think finding that neighbor who went zooming by you and letting him know that. You wet your pants because he wants, I mean, you know, I don't I don't know what else to do about that kind of thing.
Well, I I can't speak for Ruby, but I got the idea that she would like this, at least the one at the Charter School, an up or down yes or no vote. And the reason is when when we talk about it in work sessions, that doesn't get recorded in minutes. So it's never recorded that this has been talked about several times before. I said, let's just have a vote. It's recorded in the minutes that the council decided this was not a good thing and move on.
I I get it. I agree. Uh, anything else anybody want to talk about?
Uh, there was one other thing, Tom. Oh, go ahead. I don't mean to interrupt someone. I'll wait.
I think everybody else is fine.
Okay, so. Uh, Tom, I don't know if you're ready to mention this before, but um. We were talking about addressing some of the issues we've heard from residents in city council meetings. Sort of over and over again, and I know Richie's brought this up too, the twenty acre change to our zoning. And impact fees. And could you give an update? Because we've talked about that a little bit too, um those two issues and and future discussions?
Yeah, I reached out to both the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgia Municipal Association to get an expert in here to talk to us about. Is that a lizard?
Yes.
To talk to us about impact fees. Um and because of the Georgia Municipal Association meeting, they weren't, uh they weren't able to get anybody to us this month. Uh so as soon as I can get that person in here to talk to council in a work session, we'll do that. The uh the zoning thing, uh you know, we we've uh we've been talking to. Uh somebody about doing some work around the zoning, coming in and having some some town meetings, some some community meetings around that. And I think that's a good uh place to restart that conversation that we've had several times before. Think we've gotten a proposal in uh just recently from Shannon, right? That's the person that we've been talking to about that. Somebody was involved in. Actually writing the very first zoning here uh in Chadachi Hills uh in the overlay. And so has deep experience in in what we're talking about. And yeah, we'll we'll move that forward as quickly as we can. I'm I'm hoping to have somebody to talk about the impact fee next month. Anybody else? Anything else? All right, we will see you Tuesday. Thanks for coming, everybody.